Budget? Yes, sir. Thank you all. I told you I would come back for the April workshop to talk to you about budget. And I was hoping to bring you some information about where we stood as far as the legislature. Unfortunately, I cannot. Now, that doesn't mean this is because I didn't do my work. It's because the people in Tallahassee haven't completed their work. As you know, there's issues in Tallahassee right now where they are potentially going into overtime or a special session or whatever you want to call it.
Are they making more money doing that?
Well, they're costing us more money. If you give the number each day, how much it costs, but it's an astronomical amount of money that it costs each day to hold an extra day in the session.
If you were up there, we'd have...
So typically, we would have had a budget to present to you because they would have to have 72 hours in the closing period. They would vote typically Thursday or Friday. This week, we would be all happy and everyone would know what's going on. Unfortunately, that is not where we're at. And the issue is with, of course, the Medicaid, which I told you all about back in January, February. That was going to be a huge issue, and it has reared its ugly head and become the issue of the budget. They cannot decide on how to either take or not take money to fund essentially the hospitals from Medicaid funding and to increase that base. So in that respect, they cannot agree on a budget. And I've heard a couple of different scenarios. I've heard they may come back and do a special session and be done by June, June 30th, at the latest, and then we'll get a budget. I've also heard that they don't know if that's going to happen. There's some people saying out there that they may have to come back in July if that happens. State budget ends June 30th, much like our budget. What I understand to happen, because this hasn't taken place since I've been around here, we would have kind of a continuation of our current budget. No increases, no decreases, continuation of what we currently have. And then they would have to pass what they would call a supplemental budget. Now, the biggest impact on that is your trim notices. That has a huge impact because we cannot levy or at least tell the property manager what our trim, our militerate is going to be. It also has an impact upon our public hearings and our trim, you know, the whole nine yards. It has huge implications. So we're hoping that they can, you know, get together. I know there were some signs of life last Friday, today, that they are trying to come to some reconciliation. But I'm told that tomorrow, we may have a better idea of where we're going. So I will certainly update you. I'm sure you get the updates as well from Ruth Milton. She gives you daily updates. But it's an issue. And unfortunately, what we're going to go through today is kind of like, here's what we know today, here's kind of how we think we're going to look. But we really can't tell you, and we really can't make many decisions because we don't know what our money's going to be. We don't know what the impact's going to be.
Do you see a need potentially for a tax anticipation note?
No, no, not right now. When we do those in the fall, that's mainly for...
For that gap.
Yeah, some cash needs. Not right now.
The big ifs.
Right.
Is there impact on the funds, the ESE funds, Medicaid funds that come to us?
No, this is merely for funding the lower income and the hospitals and everything. You know, and the argument is on the House and the governor's side, they're saying that they're already making too much money. And then, of course, Washington's saying, no, they're not. We've got to fund these. And then it's all the Obamacare. And it's a much bigger question than what we can answer. But unfortunately, we're a recipient of the non-decision-making. You know, make a decision, we'll go with it, we'll live with it, and we'll make it work. We always do. We always make it work. Sometimes I think that's a bad thing, we always make it work. But it is what it is. We have to do our job. So that will have implications upon when they decide what the budget's going to be. It will, you know, have implications on us as to what we can put together, our budget. So what I did in this run, I used the House run. You know, we get the governor's budget, we get the Senate and the House. So we took the House because from what we're hearing, although right now, the House gives us a little bit more money than the Senate, we're told at the end of the day that the Senate budget probably will prevail, they'll add more money into it, and it should be more than what the House is today. And it gives you more flexibility. That's the key on the Senate budget as opposed to the House. So we took the House because it was fully vetted through. The Senate did not fund technology. We know that's a kind of a bone of contention right now. They're not going to throw that money in there until they go through negotiations. So we used the House run to do these runs for you and to show you where it looks like. Once again, potential special session due to the lack of resolution in the Medicaid debate between Tallahassee and Washington. That ends June 30th. So if they have no reconciliation by then, they have no money coming in from Medicaid, which is a huge gap. Right now, between the Senate and the House budget, they have a $4 billion gap. That's the biggest gap I know since I've been here. Typically, they're a lot closer, a lot easier to reconcile. But $4 billion between the two budgets, that's a huge thing, all to do with the Medicaid. Also, we go through this, our FTE does not reflect that recent change that we did in our forecast for about 130 kids, 70 for micro school, additional kids for us at the state. So we probably need to up our FTE. So we, this does not reflect that increase. That'll come when we get our final budget from the state. So, once again, a lot of the same stuff we showed you before about FTE, we're still, and these numbers, we're still down a little bit. But once we up those numbers by 130, we should be a little bit over what we were this year. In our data, you can still see, it's been going down and down and down. Now we're starting to look like, hopefully, maybe, once we get up there, start building back up. The base funding's up about a point and a half, the House's calculation from the third. If you remember, I sent you out the fourth calculation. I did not put it in here, but if you remember, we actually went up by about 60 kids for the fourth calc. And what happened? We lost $200,000. This is unheard of. So you asked me, why did that happen? Because statewide, FTE is up so much, the state budget can't support it.
Shh, don't tell the builders.
Right. So they've actually had to prorate your funds to the districts. And we actually lost $200,000 while increasing 60 students. So they want you to continue with all this end-of-course testing and all this computerized testing, and they're giving us less money for more kids. It's a great system. But anyway, this, we have the third calc up here comparing it to the House. So you can see the base funding is up, the base student allocation is up, which is good. We're told that if the Senate's budget does prevail, the base DSA will be much higher and we'll be seeing some more money than what the House run was. So these are the three different proposals from the House and the Senate and the governor. And you can see, the governor's recommendation of the base student allocation was about $4,178. The Senate's was about $4,184, and the House was $4,130. Why is that significant? Because that increases your base funding, and that gives you more flexibility in what you can do with that money. That's why I said the Senate's numbers, although lower at the bottom line because they didn't fund that technology, classroom technology fund, it will be funded at the end of the day. The House kind of restricts what we can do. So the Senate is more flexible, Senate's less, is more restrictive. That's why we kind of hope that the Senate's budget prevails once they put in that digital classroom allocation. Right now, the governor has $732,000, the House has $732,000, about the same. I'm being told the Senate will have much more than that. So that's where we'll get some more dollars coming in. And it'll be more flexible. We can use dollars to what we need, not being restricted.
I think we sent Mrs. Himmel and who else was at Tallahassee to talk with Senator Pla on some of these issues?
Right.
Technology being...
Mm-hmm. So those are the three different runs we see. I would love to have been here today to tell you what the final calc was going to be and to show you, but unfortunately, we can't. So we're just going with what we know. And unfortunately, what we know is it's going to change. So we can only do what we got. Taxable value, once again, getting a little uptick this year, coming back. We would like to see those numbers continue to grow. That means there's going to be growth in the economy, growth in the county, and the property values going up, which we all like to see. So we do see a little bit of small, a bit up to. Our tax budget, you can see, between the capital outlay and the RLE, it's starting to come back a little bit, which is good. Same deal here. And you can see what we've collected through April 15th, and our tax budget is about 80, almost 89%. You can see over the years, we collect over 100% of what we usually reject because we project 96%. That's what the state says we have to budget because, you know, if you pay your taxes in November, you get a 4% reduction. So we budget at the 96. It used to be 95 years ago, then they raised it to 96. But we typically, without that year, that 91%, that's when Duke didn't pay. You see the following year, 102, that's when they paid a little bit extra when they came through. But in previous years, we're always over 100%. So we're hoping that 89% comes up to over 100% this year as well. We should be getting our April revenue in this week to see where we're at year-to-date. Here's the graph that, I like the visual here. You can see that both the unrestricted and restricted fund balance is starting to swing up.
Yeah.
You can see at one point in time, we headed up the restricted up to 18 million and the unrestricted almost up to 16 million. And then, of course, we kind of took a nosedive basically funding operations, which, you know, we consciously did to make sure that we had the tools in our educational setting for the kids. But now, we've got to start building it back up. And I can, you can see, it's starting to swing back up slowly but surely, as the turmoil is, right? Slowly but surely. But we'll build it back up and get back to some healthy levels in the future.
Could you go back?
Yep. Yeah, I was just looking at the proposed. So you can see revenues and expenses, how we've been in the past few years. Of course, that red bar has been higher than the blue bar, which means expenses have been higher than revenues. This year, we anticipate a small surplus, which is good, and next year. Right now, a small inventory balance at the end of the day. We'll show a balance one year. But we're looking, from what we can tell today, we should be able to produce a nice balanced budget for everybody.
Back at 2013, how would we compensate for...
The fund balance. Fund balance. We took money out of reserves, yeah. That's what we did for the last four years or so in there.
You see it like that?
No, neither do I. But I understand the needs, necessities. I understand that. But yeah, now we've got to build it back up. So here's what we're looking at. The blue column is the current year's forecasted projection for year-end. And we're looking to turn a small surplus of about $500,000. Good. We want to make sure we build that fund balance. But there's also reserves, of course. Non-spendables, $500,000, that's your inventories and your warehouse. The restricted, $2 million there, a lot of that's WTI, workforce development money. It's also maybe instructional materials, any of your categoricals that are restricted to the FEP fall into that category. And then your assigned, about $300,000. Those are things that we assign, that we are not going to fall to the bottom line, like your school discretionary accounts and things like that, your band uniforms. We assign those restricted. So you can see, we're going to fall after reserves about 2.7 million. Your undesignated fund balance is about 4.6, 4.7 million, or about 4.5% of your general fund recurring revenue. So it's starting to get better, starting to look healthier. We're certainly happy with that. If you look at the proposed, you can see revenues are about $120 million. And expenses, right now, we have it balanced out with the same number. So there's no change in your fund balance in that respect. Now, your reserves, you can see that we do plan on at the year-end have the reserves, mainly WTI is a huge reserve. We're going to start trying to whittle down. If you remember, the audit said, we've got to put together some ideas and plans to start drawing some of that money down. What I plan to do, there's some capital projects over there that we'll see in the capital plan, one being some intercom system upgrades. There's another couple of items that we're looking at, maybe we're going to fund out of their workforce money and not our capital money, and be able to draw those dollars down. So we'll be able to save some of the capital, start drawing some of these reserves down because the auditor did make a comment that we need to start looking at drawing some of those dollars down. So year-end, we're looking at about another 4.4% undesignated fund balance. Once again, starting to get back into that healthy mode. Any questions about that? And here, just kind of broken down, you can see salaries, about 77 million, benefits about 20 million, purchase services, 10, 10.5 million, energy, 4, almost 5 million, materials and supplies about 5, so forth. So there's where it kind of all breaks down by object. So we're a little bit high on the budget amount for energy, but this is where we are as of April 15th. So we still have some time left in the budget a year.
Oh, yes, sure.
And our original budget...
Was about 5 million.
But for next year, we are cutting it a little bit.
Right. If you start looking at your actuals, we try to start whittling them down and get it closer to your actuals each year. And, you know, Mr. Calathani's crew's having an excellent job, Michael Billings out there monitoring that energy. And that could change, I mean, once we get closer, but we're just trying to make some good faith forecasts right now. And here, this is kind of a pie chart description that we've got to see. Of course, your biggest, 64% of our salary, our expenses, our salaries, 17% in your expenses. So that equates to 81%. So that is always your biggest expenditure that we have. In line, every year, we're right around that 80 to 82, 83%. So we're right in line where we're usually at.
So salaries and benefits were, what, 81%?
Correct. Six people, 17. So here's some questions, issues, changes, discussion points we want to talk about. At the high school, right now, middle school, elementary school, pretty much flat as far as staffing units. I know Ms. Pla is going to show you the staffing plan. Each year, we bring you in a workshop to make sure you're still good with the staffing plan. High school, though, we are estimating that we're probably going to increase potentially by maybe six units. We're still going through that. We're scheduling those conferences now with them to start looking at. I'm just made an estimate. And I'm thinking that those high school units will be funded by the increase in the FEP. So that should be a watch. That's my hope. We'll get there once we have those discussions. But that's what I'm thinking. Other things, we've met with the schools so far. One of the things they expressed to us, they want to have extra days for some of their employees, whether TOS or their guidance counselor, maybe a data clerk. So what we're proposing to do is take their discretionary dollars. It used to be $50 in FTE, weighted per FTE. We then brought it down to 45 during the days we had to reduce some budgets. We're proposing to bring it back to the $50, and then give the discretion to the principal. They then have the discretion that if their counselor, their data secretary, their bookkeeper needs extra days, they have the discretion to make that decision as a site-based manager to decide who needs that extra day. It may be one day, it may be three days, maybe five days. Instead of them calling us, asking us all the time, we want to give them the authority, the leadership to make that decision. So that would be something we would be proposing to bring into the budget, about $75,000, which that would give them the leadership to do that with.
$75,000. I'm 75,000. Or what?
Total. For an extra $5 per weighted FTE at the schools.
To bring it back up.
For school.
No, total.
Total.
Yeah.
That's not very much.
Well, extra...
Yeah, that's not very much.
That's about, if you, you know, we have 20 schools, so what, 3, 3500? I mean, that for extra days, I mean, you're not going to be given a huge amount of days weighted people. I mean, some may move 3, 2. It'll work out.
And I was just thinking, some of the requirements the state is that people are supposed to do this or that, and that's going to be trained.
Well, that's different. No, that would be training dollars that come through, maybe Title I or your Title II professional development. These will be like, okay, we need to get our data in because we've reduced some staffing at elementaries, like a data clerk, guidance secretary, they've had to combine, and I've got to have some time for this person to put in the data.
Extra work, regular things, not going to conferences.
Correct, yes.
That's why I said it's so little. You know, I'm getting...
So that's one of the things that we've looked at to try to address that situation and give them some flexibility. Going through the budget, we know performance matters. That was previously funded through Race to the Top, is going to have to be put into the budget, so 86,000. We do have that in our current runs. I just wanted to point that out to you, that that's an impact to the budget. Dual enrollment. We've been talking about this, we talked to you last month about it. I know Mr. Clark has continued to have conversations with the college. We are right now in line to lose that 50% return on the tuition. So we're looking at potentially an approximately increase of $75,000 to our budget based on dual enrollment. Great program, but it's going to cost us more because we're not going to get that money back from the college. And there's some, kind of some conversation as to, the college says their auditor said they can't do it. We say our auditor said they can, the state says it can. So it's kind of a...
And again, I would bring up that we did look and homeschoolers don't have to, they don't have to pay anything. So the question, of course, becomes, how are they getting there? Who is compensating the difference between their credit dollars and them going?
Is there any update?
No, Mr. Kennedy and I talked yesterday about the homeschool. That's not changed. They basically don't have to pay the money as far as getting to 50% back. Oh, no. Nope. Basically, I communicated with Lynn Powell at the College of Central Florida. I shared with her what I had shared with you at the last board meeting. Basically, we're at a standstill. We're actually waiting for a technical assistance paper that Mrs. Himmel had shared with me. So we're kind of at a standstill, but I did have Mr. Bradshaw look over the contract as of what we basically had the last time we talked.
How does dual enrollment work with homeschool?
Well, that's the interesting thing because the question would be, is in the past, they would have gotten an FTE, which would have been the same as a public school would be subordinating to. Well, in this case, we're having to make up the difference. We don't, we get, we still get the FTE, but we have to make up for the entire cost now of that credit hour. So, and plus, of course, the books in addition to that. The homeschool student...
We have to get their book?
For the, for our student, for, no, no, for our students. Interestingly, there is legislation right now that the homeschool student does not also have to take up their, they would not have to pay for their books. So the question would be, who is funding that?
That's my question, who?
And if they are, and if the state is not only giving an FTE, how does the state get away with only giving an FTE? And again, this is not just one college. This is statewide that this issue is. But if the state is only having to provide an FTE for a homeschool student, but we're having to provide the full boat and not being allowed to negotiate with the college, hmm...
One of the things Mr. Malin asked me to kind of just share with you is that, from my understanding, is that if we do not have an articulation agreement in place, then we basically have to report that to the state and Department of Education. And then, I believe, they intervene kind of at an impasse, and they start to work with both entities. I believe Mrs. Nobles told me that maybe Pasco County or one of the other districts in the state of Florida actually had to go through that process and how they were actually, it was over, how they were actually charging the schools for those funds.
So that could be something that this board could look to do also, then?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what I kind of shared with you in the last board meeting, is that right now, this basically have rescinded that 50% back. And so, again, we're kind of waiting to see what the legislation or if any DOE interjects or provides some guidance on those agreements.
And it's not just our district, I believe, that that's happened. Marion County, for example, they, I think they pulled it, Marion County and Sumter.
We're part of a three, a tri-county area, which are three districts, actually. Our students have to go. If those courses are being offered by the College of Central Florida, they have to go to the College of Central Florida. So yes, it is. Sumter County, Marion County, and Citrus County are part of our, part of CS service area.
Does the homeschool student use the material that is used at the college, whichever college that they're taking dual enrollment in? Or do they have wide choice and whatever?
Oh, no. They basically are bound to the college, to the professors that are in those dual enrollment courses. I hope I answered your question.
Oh, yes, right, because usually...
Like, they don't have a different requirement for a textbook.
Right, that's what I was wondering, because there are different texts that are used.
And that's changed. I can just tell you, you know, it used to be just buying a textbook. Now, there's lab fees, there, I'm sorry, there's a mathematics course. Just like we're starting to use more supplemental technology equipment, so is the college. And so then, the question is, then, who actually covers that? And does that subscription last for one year only? You know that. Now, some of those subscriptions are one year, or are they for the duration of the time that that professor requires that textbook?
Mr. Clark, you said Citrus, Sumter, and what other county?
Marion, man, Marion.
So where is Levy County in this?
I'm sorry, I apologize. It's not Sumter. It's Levy, Marion, and Citrus. Thank you, man.
You're welcome.
So dual enrollment issues. The issue we know at hand is it's going to cost us more money right now. So we've got to plan for that in the budget. The other thing that we plan for in this year's budget is the increase in Avid that was previously funded through Race to the Top. We estimate about another $60,000 that is going to be put into the budget for the Avid program. And that, of course, is, you know, pretty much district-wide with all our schools, you know, secondary schools. Radio analog system maintenance. Let me explain this one to you. The EOC, the sheriff's office, they're all going to an upgraded radio, band, digital, et cetera. They are moving forth, they're transitioning to it, and you'll see some stuff in the capital plan that I have to ask you as well. But right now, the school district and the county itself are going to stay on the old analog system. So where before, when they had multiple agencies, they could distribute out the maintenance cost to, now they have two. So where we had previously funded that at around $10,000 a year, we're looking at $30,000 now this year to fund that analog radio maintenance. So I'm just telling you, that's something we've got to plan and pay for, so.
And you figured out that when we change to digital, how much that changed with the...
I don't know the maintenance cost of that. We've always paid a maintenance fee on this system. We just got to pay more because there's only two people using the old analog system. Right now, what we've got to be concerned with is in the capital plan I addressed in the year is the payment of buying into essentially the digital system.
Right.
So I don't know what the main, I know the first year, their maintenance is free. I don't know what it's going to be from that point forward. But the sheriff pays the lion's share of it because they use it the majority of the time.
We use it on a per-click basis?
That is typically what they do, yeah. But if you're talking about the capital expenditure, switch over from analog to digital, that's a pretty large expense.
About 300,000 they got to put in here. Right? And there's some options, and I'll get that when I get to the capital plan. So I just wanted to bring that up to your attention. Of course, salary, health insurance increases, those are always negotiated. Each year, we have to negotiate, you know, those. But just want to make sure you're aware that we have to make sure we plan for that.
White fleet replacement plan, this is something that's been certainly talked about for several years, that we haven't really done any modernization, upgrades, replacements to our white fleet because we use in fund balance to support the needs in our classrooms, we haven't felt like we needed to support the white fleet. It is something now that we need to start addressing and looking at the plan. So I bring that to your attention because I think it's something we need to talk about in here, is the white fleet replacement plan. Because we have a lot of vehicles that are starting to have increasing mileage, increasing cost of maintenance. So we need to sit here and look at a plan on how we're going to start addressing those needs, if we do. These are certainly all topics for discussion. And also, staffing needs for district departments. We've had conversations with the departments, looking at their staffing needs. We know there's some issues, we've been, you know, cutting them as well as everybody else. Is there some things we need to start bringing back and looking at a systematic approach to maybe looking at those district departments for any type of positions they may need, so. The one good news I can bring you is last week, Ms. Bryant, actually, and Ms. Seritz attended FISBIT, and we came out of there with a reduction in our insurance of about and we came out of there with a reduction in our insurance of about $250,000. That's great news. It's so good that this is pretty much the bottom as they have seen in the last 10 or 12 years at the lowest rates they've seen. They're currently trying to negotiate maybe a guaranteed two-year rate because they're so low, they think their, only way they're going to go is go up. They're not going to go any lower than what they are, presumably. So, they're actually trying to negotiate a two-year rate that, so we would know what our rate is this year and next year be identical to the same. That's good. One of the things we did talk about though, and I thought, I felt compelled to bring it to you because I think it's a very topic that we need to talk about is looking at maybe increasing our excess liability coverage. Currently, we have $1 million. We have options on the table to increase that up to $5 million. And you can see what it costs to buy up to $2, maybe $35,000, $3, $54,000, et cetera. And you say, why do we need that, or why should we be aware of that, or, you know, why do we want to talk about that? Well, some of the reasons are federal court. We're seeing more lawsuits for employment issues, sexual harassment, civil rights, they're increasing constantly all the time. We went through one recently that went for several years. Florida tort cases and out-of-state claims. So, some of those issues continue to increase. I just felt like it may be something we want to talk about. I would probably say if we wanted to increase it up to $2 million for the $35,000, it'd be well worth the money. But I mean, if Ms. Bryant was in the same meetings I was, I mean, I don't know.
I agree, and now's the time to do it.
Right, that the rates are so inexpensive.
Is that, and I guess that would be the question, is what would the recommendation be? Is $2 million adequate enough? Is, should we be looking at more? I mean, that, that would be my only question is. I can see where at the very minimum, a $2 million may be a need, but.
Ask Wes next time he sees you, what do you, what's your recommendation? Sure, I can ask him outside of the.
I think we need to have some guidance, but I definitely, I would be one to also be supportive of at least going to the $2 million. But if there's a need for more, I think we have to at least, you know, consider that.
Are we seeing the same trend locally as we see at the federal court level?
Yes, I mean, we constantly have issues with people wanting to file lawsuits. It's too easy. We just went through one individual, two separate lawsuits, but basically the same thing. It just kept coming back, you know, so. And these, these rates are relatively inexpensive to protect yourself.
And some of the losses that are filed are so bizarre, they just can't even believe someone will file it. I mean, really, they want to take their fish to work with them. And you're discriminating.
I don't understand what you're talking about. You have some fish.
Well, they're kind of neat.
The good news is our property casualty insurance went down by quarter of a million. That's great news. That can help fund some of these increases that we're looking at. And hopefully, if they can guarantee it for an additional year that, until we know what the two-year rate's going to be, that's good. Because every year, we kind of wonder how it's going to be, so.
No hurricane.
No hurricanes, you know? So, one of the things too I wanted to bring forth with Ms. Farmer's here is kind of the white fleet replacement plan. One of the things that I said earlier that we need to start addressing this and looking at it and having conversations about it. She has a recommended replacement cycle, and basically vehicles should meet at least two of the filing criteria, 10 to 12 years in age, 100 to 120,000 miles, and the cost of repair exceeds the value of the vehicle for two or more years. I think that's very important. And of course, there's exceptions based on specialty needs and the repair costs or anything. And she's based on the federal minimum replacement standards. But that's kind of the standard that she has established. Looking at the fleet, it's something tangible. We can have an objective opinion as to what ones need to be replaced. Looking at that criteria, currently, there's eight vehicles that meet that criteria or exceed that criteria. There's five vehicles in maintenance, two in ESC, and one in the warehouse. And you can see what we estimate the cost would be to, to fund those, about $180,000.
On those eight vehicles, do we also then do an analysis of whether they're still being necessary to, you know, to the district? Whether that means we stub them out? And it's not that I'm saying we don't need it. I'm just saying, you know, if all of a sudden ESC decides now they're doing something different, or you've taken a fleet somewhere else and you've relocated, I know you've done a great job with that.
Yes, we do. We look at the miles used, miles driven annually. If they fall below a certain, I don't have to remember my head.
That's okay.
They wouldn't, they, they wouldn't meet the replacement criteria either. So, it's based on use, useful life, number of years, and total mileage and replace that.
I'm thinking though, like, if we, if for some reason over the last couple of years, if we reduced two ESC's personnel and we didn't need necessarily, do we take? And I'm, and I'm not saying that we do or that we.
We shifted those vehicles to other departments or cost centers that have hired new staff.
And then just not included them or surplus them basically out of the fleet?
Yes.
And do you figure in here also the condition of the vehicle, not, not just the miles or the motor, but the way it looks? Because I know there's one out there that I know, go make a home business with, and I thought, I wouldn't open my door if anyone drove up in there. Rusty.
We have not specifically factored that in unless it's been something that we've repaired and it's factored into the cost, the repair cost. So, if it's a vehicle that we've painted or done bodywork on, it would be factored into that repair cost for that vehicle.
Okay, and so those are rotated. If something goes bad?
Most of the, most of those vehicles, though, are, are generally the Crown Victorias that we acquired from the sheriff's office. And most of those are used by district departments, and, and a lot of those are used as backup vehicles. For, for example, if someone's vehicle was in for service or repair, they would use one of those temporarily.
I know, I remember riding one of them, it sounded terribly wrong with the floorboard, and it was one of those backup vehicles. I thought, are you sure you're supposed to be driving this car yet? But it was, it was something that normally isn't driven very much, so I was grateful for that.
And Ms. Powers, to kind of go on what you're saying too with vehicles, you know, I'm also concerned about the students who ride in, in white fleet vehicles. Because some of them, I, I've seen, you know, have not been what I would expect as a parent for a child to ride in. And that's one of the issues that I brought up, and is, is that something that you could just brief the board on as far as the, the vehicles? Because the high schools are using vehicles that were originally purchased as driver's ed vehicles.
Yes.
And they use those to transport. There, there's only schools, there's only vehicles at the high schools, not the middle schools and elementary schools. But could you just give us an overview of that?
Each high school has two vans. One is a 2005, and one is a 2009 at each high school. They were bought with.
Losberg.
Losberg funds for, for driver's ed originally. The schools do use those to transport students, generally for the clubs and the smaller athletic teams like golf and tennis and those types of things. So, they do transport them in those vans to try to save cost.
And then in the summer, they're used for driver's ed education.
Right, right.
And then sometimes you use the buses, I know, because sometimes we've said, well, instead of taking the two vans, you've provided a bus, and I think it's a little more cost-effective for us to take the bus.
Well, when, when a school uses a bus for a field trip, it costs them the driver's salary, which is $12 an hour, that's benefits, and then an 80 cent per mile fee for the fuel. So, when you, they use their vans, they don't pay those fees. So, that's why some of the coaches and club leaders will take the vans for the smaller groups to save that cost for the field trip, which comes into the school budget, not my budget.
But we do have some factors that that means we have to have two people to drive those, those vehicles that are school employees.
Correct.
Well, I don't think our chaperones can, can drive.
Well, club leaders, club leaders.
Club leaders. Then would they have to do that? So, then that's that. No, yes, go again.
Let me ask you, there used to be a procedure for the smaller needs where we would rent from budget and have a little van. And just comparing cost of having something on as far as part of the fleet with the ongoing insurance.
They still actually do that. I'm typically not involved in that process, so I don't know if anyone knows more about that, but.
We didn't have, we didn't have vans when I was a principal because we just, they were at the district office and it's, they would send them down to do driver's ed in the summertime. But then when they bought the vans for the high schools, the offer was made to leave them to the high schools for their use. And that's when the high schools started using the vans to transport students. Prior to that, we rented vans from Enterprise when we took buses, so.
But for instance, one of the vehicles, my daughter was on the way to a tennis match and it broke down in Sumter County. The vehicle did, you know, and again, I didn't, I'm not a real fan of that vehicle to start with because I think it, you know, when we transport students, we should have, you know, a priority for those vehicles, just for safety reasons. And so, that's something that I would like to see us as a board maybe institute or look at a replacement plan for those vehicles. Or look at the big picture on, you mentioned leasing vehicles. We talked about getting a bus. You know, there, I think there's significant savings too.
I think we have to be careful when we're talking about leasing on a white fleet. I have trouble spending large amounts of money on white fleets when we have in-school needs that we need to still, that we're still trying to make up for last past budgets. I understand your concern about the student safety. I'm not sure we can't address that through transportation and busing alternatives. As, as Mr. Mullen said, maybe we have to rethink whether we have vans at schools because that really came out of a grant situation, I believe we had. It wasn't that that was typically part of our fleet that we provided those vehicles at the school. So, maybe that's the answer to that. But I, I would definitely say that, and it's terrible, I'm sorry, because I would be, I would be having a tough time if I was a dad and my, my child was stuck in a vehicle. But it's happened with my bus, with the bus too. It just unfortunately does happen. And, and transportation is usually really good in Maryland, and getting out there and getting a replacement, something or another.
Statistically speaking, school bus transportation is the safest mode of transportation because the seats are built with compartmentalization to help with impact. However, we did have a field trip bus break down Friday night.
Sure.
So, you still had a bus full of children there on the side of the road that we had to get to. But it does happen. But newer isn't always better because we put a 2015 bus on the road a week ago and it broke down and it's on its debut run. So, newer doesn't always, with the computers and, that fail can fail and they're harder to diagnose on the side of the road. That's not always better, but.
Ms. Bryant's got something here.
Oh, that's, that's what I was going to say, I was going to just recommend that you replace the 2005 buses with 2015. Just forget the van. Just create a new van.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I call up Maryland, and there's a bus that I pass like almost every day along the road. And that was the cleanest, the brightest, the shiniest bus I've ever seen in my life. And every time I pass it, I smile. I thought, you know, it gives such a great appearance for the school system to have this really, really nice bus. So, I had to call up until it's, it's beyond expectation. It was really, really nice.
And we'll tell you, our, the six vans that belong to the high schools that are assigned to the high schools, only one meets two of the criteria. They all three fall in, the 2005s fall at 10 years, so they're all just within the criteria with the number of years. Only one is within the range on mileage. This, the second one, which is, the first one is at Christopher High School. The second one is Citrus is close, so it's probably going to hit that mileage at the starting point of the range. None of them are, are even close to the range on the repair cost.
And those are still being used though for driver's ed in the summer?
Yes, yes, all six of them.
If I could just say one thing about Maryland's process for replacing vehicles. We used to go on an age, and the school board instructed Maryland and I a few years ago, when I worked with Maryland, that age didn't mean the vehicle couldn't be kept. So, we went back and re-examined that, and we came up with a different method for assessing whether or not the vehicles needed to be replaced. So, that was at the direction of this board, not this board, but the board in place at the time, that we look at this from a different perspective and not just replace things based on age. So, we didn't get there just by accident.
Ms. Belfort.
I just wanted, if, if we could have a report, I think that would solve a lot of the questions that are out there right now. How many we have in the fleet, how they're allocated, their use record, so that we can, we can defend the need of the white fleet. Because as board members, we do get that question, what's the deal with all the white vans and, and cars out there? So, it'd be nice for us to have that tool so that we can keep ourselves tuned in to what's happening with the white fleet and, and talk with certainty when people do question us.
What I'll do is I'll email you the chart that I already have. If there's information that you want me to add to it, just let me know what that is, and I'll add a column and we'll add that piece. That way, you'll see, it's in age order at this point, the oldest to the newest. So, I'll get, I'll get that out to you right away, and then you can tell me what criteria you'd like to see also, and we'll put that on.
Maryland, on, on the, the six vehicles though, for the high schools, just for clarification, you said they meet, at, at most, two meet one of the two criterias, but none of them are close to meeting two.
Three of the vehicles meet the 10 to 12 year requirement.
Okay.
They're, they're 2005, so they're at 10 years. One at Christopher High School is just within the mileage range. It's just over 100,000 miles. A second at Citrus High is close, very close. It was in the 90,000 mile, mileage range. None, none of them meet the repair cost exceeding the value of the vehicle for at least two or more years.
So, then there's none that at this point you're seeing, would, you would be putting in your budget in the next couple of years? Or would you?
Not strictly following the criteria.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. As far as the criteria, there's nothing that's going to fall into that. So, I think that the only question that I would say, and I really think it's your department's doing is, is to then maybe say, since those were not part of the initial white fleet and that those were part of a grant situation, is whether that's something that we find we're going to need to continue to provide or whether we need to be saying, well, it's just not, we're just not going to be replacing those. So, when they go, they go, or that we do need to be looking at putting them into the capital budget. And that's really, I would think, we come from your department, you know, as a recommendation. At least that's how this board member feels like.
But one vehicle does meet two of the criteria, and the other ones probably will be.
Very soon.
By the end of the school year. So, there are two of those six vehicles that.
So, then there are ones that you would be replacing.
They don't need all three.
That's what I, that's what I guess I'm trying to make sure. So, they, they're not now.
Well, they said vehicles should meet at least two of the following criteria.
Right, at least two, correct.
So, in order to be replaced, they have to meet two of the three criteria.
And we're looking for you.
That's the policy. Well, that's the plan. The plan, right, the plan. More policy, but also we have to look at in totality, all the vehicles we have. There's a lot of them that meet two criteria right now. I just presented to you the ones that are the worst of the worst. Maybe that list will help.
Right.
Solve some of these ongoing questions that you can see where they all kind of fall.
And I would just say though, this board has been, and with the help of Ms. Farmer, has been very conservative in how we've addressed funding the white fleet. And a lot of that is for a few reasons. One, yes, the public, they do not like when we have big white fleets that are, you know, that look sparkling brand-new. Because they see that, yeah, and they don't need to worry about that with us. And the other is because we have made it a priority for the classrooms and schools to have the lion's share of making sure it gets funded. And Maryland has done, I think, an exceptional job at doing that. We take, that's an approach even with our buses, where, you know, there's been years where you've had to prioritize getting a new bus. And by the way, that shiny new bus, I'm always amazed when I look up and it says 2009 on the side of it. Because I think that's, they're really pretty remarkable how you've been keeping them up. So, I think that we have to continue to be conservative in, in how we approach it. Again, looking at safety as an issue and maintaining, but also to say, have we have changed maybe the prioritizing need, particularly with that, those high school fleets?
Well, and also comparing the cost from insurance, maintenance, upkeep with, if someone were to just file for their mileage reimbursement. You know, looking at those comparables, you know, I, I don't know if there may, there may have been an analysis.
Well, there was an issue as well though with your private insurance. It's a difference between me going temporary duty once a month and me using my vehicle every day for work purposes. So, there's a difference with your own private insurance. Ask an employee to do that every day on a regular basis and, and their private insurance company insuring them for that purpose.
And also some of those trips that are made, they're like social workers, counselors.
Attendance workers.
And you can go down some roads that are pretty rough on any car. And I think the very car I was talking about goes down those roads because I was told that sometimes, you know, if that is the case, you're going to absolutely ruin this car within a short period of time because.
And then not all staff members want to put that kind of mileage on their vehicles in Citrus County, so.
Take the axle out.
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure that, that, you know, that that's going to be a solution, is mileage.
I, I don't know. I haven't had the information, but we're going to forward it to you.
On the spreadsheet I'll send to you, you'll see in red, it highlights those that are, well exceed the range. And there are a number of vehicles. You have maintenance employees who drive vehicles that are quite old every single day, so.
Mr. Calzante, if I recall.
And we're looking for your input onto, you know, what, you know, you tell us if it's more important to replace the high school vans, then that's a decision that you certainly can make, but we'll show you what we have.
Thanks.
And I think that that would involve, again, I think that your, your department needs to look at how much they're being utilized, what kind of, you know, use, because I'm not sure that I'm wanting to for the amount of use it gets. If, if it's not getting the kind of use that it should, maybe we should be handling it through bus transportation, which is a safer means of transportation.
And I'll send you also the repair history on those six vehicles. I'll hold that. We'll have to share that with you. Thank you, Maryland.
Thank you. So, Maryland will send that to you, then, you know, then it's here for conversation to decide, okay, based on all the facts, A, do we even have money to do anything? We may not have money to do, replace one vehicle. But at least we got a, maybe a plan of attack that we know once we get some dollars and we can do this. But this is the way we can have that conversation.
Are these eight vehicles being recommended into the budget?
These are the ones, yes, that are currently saying, these are the most need. That's what it's going to take.
And these are in the budget?
These are not in the budget, no. These are, that's things that we got to discuss. Can we do this? Do we want to do it? Do you tell me to go back and, you know, try to massage things? Do you have recommendations to reduce other budget to put in here? So, this is all.
Bring money.
Well, I know that, yes, but I can't tell you how much money we have today because our leaders in town have.
Leaders in town have.
Hoping that you can see more, we can, to make some of these, make some of these decisions a little easier. But I just want to present this to you, and this has been a topic, topic of discussion, to say, this is the, the plan, recommended replacement plan. These are the ones that we see the most critical need right now.
Thanks, thank you.
So, the decisions, of course, that I've, I've just put up to you today is, you know, those high school teaching units we're anticipating, hopefully should be funded by the increased FTE, increase in the school discretionary, the radio maintenance, the insurance upgrades. I think we got some, 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 some issues or some conversation to move forward, maybe consult with us to see what he thinks. White fleet, you saw that. Maryland's going to send you some additional information on white fleet. We'll have further conversation to see where we want to go, if we want to fund one, two, 10, whatever, and then try to figure out how this is going to work.
And maybe we all can tell everyone the use of those, some of those vehicles, some people do not know of that, that road with buses.
How many do we have? How are they allocated and what's their use?
She has all that information on the data. And the district's staffing needs, I know the superintendent is going to meet with us next week, and we're going to start looking at, you know, coming forth with a plan to bring to you to potentially address some of those issues too. I just want to bring it to your attention, that way you know it's on the horizon.
Well, I think if, you know, to, to squelch some of the dialogue that's out there about the white fleet, if we know the, the need. the white fleet, if we know the need is there, it's strong, it's because of what Mr. Mullins was pointing out, the insurance, the personal insurance versus the private, those components will help us. It's not that any one of us is trying to attack the white fleet, so to speak, we just need to have a basis of understanding of the need so that we can move forward in conversation when somebody does question us. Because like Mr. Kennedy pointed out, when they are sitting out there, they are a target of controversy and we want to be able to help people understand why we have them. That's it. It's back to the 403B.
We're in that business.
Is it?
That is our trade.
Thank you, I definitely thank you for what you've done, so I'm looking forward to the information.
So these are some of the things that we got to discuss further, we bring back further, you know, information to the next budget workshop. Hopefully the next time we meet with you, I assume that'll be in June because there is no May workshop. So there'll be one in June.
Wait a minute, no, no. You said that we were rescheduling one and having a May workshop.
You're correct, we are going to have one in May.
Yeah, so we're going to be putting a May work, I'm just doing this to mess with Doug. I want to get it seen. We're not going to have a May workshop.
But to have some information, I would bring to you the June regular scheduled board meeting if I got some information from town.
Yeah, and if we need to, I was going to say, we could have a morning session in June or something of that nature, but, no, I just wanted to ask what you've done.
So, a lot of good information, a lot of good conversation to see where we need to go. Any other questions on the general fund?
Thank you.
Hopefully it's looking better, we're getting some more funding. So now let's talk about the capital budget. I know the capital budget's always a great topic of discussion to see how we're going to fund different projects. And this is kind of the summary of the five-year work plan and the revenue of such. Pretty much, you know, we do an allocation on the, what we think this taxable value's going to increase, we know the mileage is 1.5, interest income, we can do it as a straight allocation. The biggest issue or the unknown is the PICO funding. PICO, the numbers up there, you see the 772,000 across the board to 900,000 is what DOE has told us. That's what they have, they say that's what we can expect for PICO. Now, you know, each year the legislature has to advise now PICO what they can provide. So this is just an estimate of what they anticipate us getting this year. You know, in the past, there's been issues with the charter schools had all the PICO money, we got nothing. So we don't know how it's going to go, you know, the other issue is, you know, the charter schools are trying to get some of our 1.5. So this is, you know, best we know today and what we think it's going to be. So you can see the fund balances we're currently rolling over and those are from dollars we've gotten in the past and we continue to help fund some of the programs or the projects.
Kenny, you showed $200,000 in here for impact fees, but we're not collecting impact fees.
Right, those are for projects that we've had previous, those are.
So those are already, you just bank them back in and they're in reserves at this point?
Right.
Okay.
And remember, we have to get the project approved, we spend the money, then we get the money back. That's part of the STP at Full City, the sewer treatment plant.
How much do we still have? I don't know, I'm talking ahead. But I think the last I looked, there were.
It was getting low.
There's not much.
These are the typical expenditures that we're looking to see across the board. Of course, these can be massaged in any which a way as to how we believe, but if you look, you see the total appropriations each year, you see the ending fund balance, we're anticipating for the 16 years about 22,500 and all across the board, till at the 20 year about 9.5 million. So we kind of always have that gauge, we didn't want to go below 5 million in the capital fund, we want to kind of keep that buffer because you never know what may happen. So we've got some room in there for projects that we can look at and I'll show you some of the projects.
Kenny, is this mirrored off of last year's?
Everything except for the teacher staff computers.
I was going to say, because that's the only thing I was going to say that I know, and I'm looking here and I know you're going to talk about it in a second, but we had it in the budget and it's not in, it's not showing on there.
And we lifted it out to have conversation to say if we want to continue with that idea of funding it. I know Doc's got some technology plan updates for you today to talk about that, but if we want to put it in, it's merely we put it back in and we run through it. I just want to make sure everyone is.
We'll talk about it when we can, because I'm not sure that that shouldn't have been, stayed in there, because it wasn't lifted out by the staff.
It was only lifted out by me. I made the decision to bring it up because I just want to have conversation.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
But it was in there originally, not to.
And just, you know, the problem is, is that that's not an economic budgeting issue, it really is something that, I don't think we should be doing that. If that's, if education, regardless of that, it needs to come out of education. If education, the side of the house is saying, we're going to do something different, then they should be saying, we're not going to fund it. But I don't think that that's happened with this, so I just don't like that we just lift things out and pull them out. That's the only thing.
I did it barely to show you that we have some other needs, this may be an alternative, but at the end of the day, the decision is to keep them in there, do we stay in there? I think there is a conversation we had on how we look forward to funding it, as far as do you do a lease, do you pay for it outright? You know, before, I'm a big advocate of leasing because I believe in that continuation of having new technology because it changes so much. Unfortunately, we had to make some adjustments in that road and I just, I did lift it out to just have that conversation.
And for teachers and.
Staff.
In reference to the bond payment, what is, one of those bonds paid off?
Right here's your bond payment schedule. The Christopher Primary School was paid off this April and then it goes down to April 2027 is the rest for May for the high school.
About 2027.
Right, now we have to start our invested sinking fund by next April, so then we'll take, you know, you always pay the interest to your bond holders, then you'll take the principal and then you'll be able to invest it. And I think the most we can make is about 4.3%, which I hope we get close to that, I don't think we will, but that's what we had, originally we did the bond back in 2010, that's what we had put in there, that was the most the IRSes we can make, so we can use interest earnings to help offset the expense.
And then on your, on the previous slide, the transportation budget, you have 1.2 million and then 700,000 in future years. Can you explain that? So that's, why only 700?
We backed it down this past year, or we added dollars in this year to help, because we didn't buy as many buses the year before. And we sort of look at, but also we're going to ask you to look to fund the GPS this year. That's why you see the higher number that's in here to look at.
Okay.
Right. So here's all your buses, how they are, you know, how they are and what we look at replacing. So we try to give that to you, that we have that information. Dr. Gettis' capital budget for the technology, you can see his one-to-one initiative is still there, it's about 1.8 million. Then some other hardware needs that he has, repairs, et cetera. IS, we are allowed to use some capital funds for software, enterprise type software, which is mainly our Skyward system. And some additional ones we have, but we classify as enterprise. I know this is pretty small, but it's the copier and phone leases that we're allowed to use capital funds for. We lease our copying machines and our phones, so we're able to get that money back and that's where they're all allocated to. Co-compliance, everything to do with, you know, fire safety, elevators, hood suppression generators, sprinklers, those are all the dollars allocated for those types of repairs.
Cafeteria funds and equipment, are they paid back for out of the cafeteria funds or general funds?
They pay for their allocation for utilities, which funds, phones and the utilities. Maintenance, Mr. Colasanti's budget, you can see a lot of this capital in general, a lot of it gets paid back out of capital from the general fund, so we look at all those different things he has. Dollars out there for to help do repairs and maintenance at the schools. And we try to detail it out as much as possible, that way you see exactly what he's budgeting his money out of the board.
I have a question about playgrounds.
Yes. We did some replacement of playground equipment at Citrus Springs Elementary.
I did.
Yes.
Turn around.
And then Alan's budget, the facilities and construction budget, you can see this year, continuation of Full City sewer plant, HVAC upgrades, the WTI intercom upgrade, that's the one that I think that we'll be able to actually put the funds back in the capital budget and use workforce development dollars to fund, because that'll be helping draw down some of those dollars. So I'm helping to do a reclass of those dollars there, that's about 382,000. IMS kitchen remodeling, that's going for, Citrus Springs Middle School regrooving, you can see that number's like 680,000, where last year we budgeted 1.2 million, so that's a big reduction. We saved a lot of money in shingles there, asphalt, I guess it's going to be, oil prices coming down, so.
Is it?
No, ma'am.
No, no, it was also because there's a reduction in the cost of materials. So it wasn't, you know, it wasn't just.
And we saved money from the last storm that came through, we already took off some of the shingles, so we got that labor.
We get the insurance, we get the insurance hanging on that.
So we got some fire alarm upgrades, you know, Crest HVAC, so a lot of stuff, now and remember, Alan's shop used to be three project managers, he's now down to one. Because we don't have a lot of construction going on, we have a lot of remodeling, so we think we're able to take care of one project manager. Of course, we're having Alan actually aiding and getting out on the field too, so we're going to see how that works and make sure we don't have to refund that position, but I think we'll be okay, because we don't have a lot of construction going on, a lot of roofs and a lot of air conditioners, it seems like. And then other transfers back and forth, portable's, vocational equipment, classroom furniture. Every year we allocate about 100,000 for classroom furniture and they'll tell you that nobody's allowed to buy any furniture until it comes through me. I do look at it, I do try to make sure it is something that, you know, just because you're a new kid on the block doesn't mean you get an old new suite of furniture, it's got to be justifiable. So, Mr. Kennedy raises a great point, that 1.9 million you see for teacher and staff computers, that was in the budget and to no fault of anybody but myself, I took it out just to have conversation, so if anyone.
And here's the problem I have with that, that's, and I appreciate the sentiment, but we can't keep, we can't do that where all of a sudden, education has a lot of things in their budget and we just don't like it and one side of the house just says, well, we're going to start doing that, because what happens then if the education side of the house starts going over and saying to Mr. Colasanti, well, we don't need to do this, that and the other thing because we need to fund this? So I have concerns with, this was part of something education has done, they're seeing that, I believe, and, you know, and it's not just because it's technology, you know, and I'm going to ask the question, is the GPS for buses of a half a million dollars, is that coming out of a committee decision that we need to do that? Because if it's a recommendation, then, you know, one, we basically had in the budget as part of a plan, this is now coming not as part of that. So, you know, we've had some of that conversation, that it's one thing when we have it in the budget and then we have to remove it. I've not heard that education or technology or the teachers, side of the houses said that they have any difference in plan. So that's why I'm saying, I think we have to be careful with each side of the house starting to pick on somebody else's side.
It's not, it's not, it's barely my opinion, I wanted to lift out and have the discussion, it wasn't a pick on Dr. Gettis or the educational side, please don't take that down.
But then why are we having it? Ken, I'm just, I'm just being fair to say, why is that the case?
I want to make sure that we still want to allocate those dollars, district for staff and district computers. I don't know, do we need them next year? Do we need them year three, year four? I just want to have that conversation.
But that's not a board decision. That's a decision that's for the educational side of the house to come up with a recommendation. And I think that's why I say in this, we need to then, I think, put that back, I mean, Mr. Mullins, it's your side of the house, I mean.
I think it's both because it's not just a school, it's going to be for business services too. It's going to be for everybody.
So, but I mean, is that something that there's been a change in philosophy, that this needs to be brought to the board?
I can see what Thomas is talking about because everything below that is sort of comparable, busless, GPS, county radio, those are like things or activities, but that one, that is curriculum, that's.
Well, no, it's not totally curriculum.
It's a machine, but it delivers curriculum.
I think this is going to be, this is, it is curriculum, but it's also business as well, right Mike?
Yes, sir.
Because it's going to, a lot of what the teachers do is also business related. It's Skyward, I mean, it's curriculum related as well, but attendance and those kind of things.
But this isn't, you know.
Different, more radius.
Correct, but I mean, this is something where, again, this is not a board decision, it's a, I mean, to recommend, this is really for staff.
I think we're recommending we upgrade the computers, the board has to prioritize, the board has to decide whether or not they're going to budget for it.
But we had it in the budget.
We had it in the five-year work plan.
And last year it was in the budget.
It was in the five-year work plan for the 16 year.
Correct, so that, so again, though, that's what I'm saying, so staff's decided that you're saying you wanted it, it was in the budget and I don't know why it's being brought to us.
Because I wanted to lift out and have the discussion to make sure we still want to continue to fund, point blank, my opinion.
Okay.
And so we put it back in the budget section now?
You, I think I've heard that.
Well, we're in the five-year work plan, is it, I'm only getting the one slide from before, is it in the five-year work plan for?
It was in last year's budget. If you pull, if you pull out last year's budget, it was in there for the 2015, 2016 school year.
You're correct.
Okay. So that's why I'm saying, it's just one big item that was taken out and said we're going to throw it up for discussion.
Right. And it's not in this summary of the five-year work plan for, in this slide?
I took it out.
Okay, I see, okay.
Merely my opinion.
And where would that fall on those?
Technology.
Technology.
And the long and the short of it is your purpose for, is to make sure that this is the time now, do you want to, as a board, fund these projects? We've talked about them, are we wanting to do it? We're moving forward, we talked about it, we approved it, and here it is again, this is, this is it. Do you really want to do this? Is that, that's kind of the feeling here. So with that said, there's no action to be done by the board today, it's just whether or not we want to move forward with discussion about any of these topics.
Well, no, the difference is, is that top one was in the budget, those other ones are not.
Discussions.
No, the other ones are not in the budget. One was in the budget and removed, the other ones now are new to the budget. That's a very different situation though.
The one you see a pool.
We already, but we did, we actually had given direction on that.
That's what I'm saying, you would have given direction on that.
But we haven't given direction on the other items. The other items would be, in typical years, the other items would be come out for discussion. This, the top one has just been pulled out. It wasn't that we gave direction, concern, or that staff is saying we're not going to need it, it just is, it was in the budget, it was removed out of it. The GPS, the lifters, the radio system and the site, security upgrades are new conversations altogether.
I think what, what Thomas is saying is, he anticipated everything in year 15, 16 to automatically roll into the new budget and then whatever new items.
And unless there's a change from staff recommending something.
Is that, am I?
Isn't that how we've typically always done it? If there's been a staff change in recommendation.
It still has to come to you for approval. Either way, it still has to come to you for approval. You have, you can take anything out, put anything in at your budgets, we just put it together.
So Thomas, do you have a problem with?
I just am, I am just always concerned that, for example, when we take things out, we've had in the budget, we've had conversation, we've put them in. And, and for us as a board to just start cherry picking it in and out, that's not what our role is. Our role is to go get a recommendation from staff as to what direction, whether they do something, they need something, they don't need something. And then we, we act on that.
But is there a need for teacher-staff computers?
I think Mr. Gettis would be best to address that.
Yeah, let, maybe even the technology plan, let him address that when he represents it. For now, let's just kind of...
Well, I can give you a short answer, but I think he can give you a more detailed answer.
I'll have a short answer.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't disagree, I understand that. I'm putting together a budget for information, I did that. I understand where he's coming from. I, I completely understand that. It was in the five-year plan. I just wanted to have the further discussion.
The reason I say it's more than just a quick answer is because, you know, can you, it's one of those, can you survive without it? Yes, but there's, but there's going to be a cost to that. I mean, we survived probably four years longer than we could have the last time we did a refresh. And there were a lot of issues that came up between, even down to the point where staff couldn't open documents coming from DOE because we didn't have the right version of software because our machines were getting that outdated. So there's, you know, there's, it's a deeper answer than just yes. And Mike can address that, you know. Technology is one of those things that we have prided ourselves on staying at the cutting edge. And it is an efficiency thing for employees as well. So there's a, there's an efficiency factor involved with staying up to date on technology as well. So I'd rather Mike address that in his technology plan...
And try to do it now.
Than just simply say, "Yes, we need them." Because I think he can lay out exactly where we're at and what his proposal would be for how we can get to where we need to be.
And so do I. I want to make sure I understand that, that, then we'll go back where it was before. And the ones below that are ones that are things that we're going to particularly focus on.
That's the direction I heard, to put it back in the plan as it was previously approved.
That's what I understood.
So can we go to the next item?
Mm-hmm.
GPSes. This is an item that I think we spoke to you all previously about. There's a couple of different, and Marilyn is here certainly to support or to correct what I say. It's incorrect. There's a couple of different options. You have like a passive option where you have information that is stored in the GPS and it does not download till it hits like a compound, it's on Wi-Fi and it shoots into her computer and she can see afterwards what happened. But also, unless you hit the cameras, and we need better cameras. So many times we have issues on the bus and the cameras don't work correctly. And these will be new HD-type cameras. The second system, and this is what we're recommending for the five, and these are for the entire fleet too, is an active GPS system that one of the sub-bus drivers gets on and says, "Order my route today." It can be programmed in and they know exactly where. Secondly, we would know where buses are at any given time. Third, and I asked Ms. Farmer to, to address this, any type of cost savings that we realize. And you may realize it based on reduced mileage, shortening up routes, different ways of getting there in time for your bus drivers. We did this before manually and we save some dollars. So I just wanted her to address that to you.
One of the key factors with live GPS is that you can add student tracking as well. So just kind of keep that in mind. Without live GPS, you can't add a student tracking feature. Not necessarily, you don't necessarily have to get it now, but you can't, you can't add it later unless you have live GPS. And the student tracking piece in and of itself would, would help us reduce our costs because every day, every elementary driver is spending at least 15 minutes between what they're doing at the school and they're doing a manual roll call at the school. And if you ever are in a bus ramp, you'll see them out there doing their manual roll call. Then when it gets to the bus stop, they're doing the manual roll call as students get off. And you'll see Ms. Powers knows this is near and dear to her heart, but you'll see the traffic backing up when we're getting at the daycare on 581 because the drivers are checking off each and every student. Then there's also that piece where they can make mistakes. You know, they think that was Johnny, but it wasn't Johnny. Or, you know, I remember Johnny from yesterday, so yeah, Johnny was on the bus. So you also kind of can eliminate some of those human error factors. But the GPS would also allow us to do cost analysis for, which would be planned routes versus actual routes. So you can compare your planned route from your actual route. You can reduce driver time considerably. You can also see whether idling or whether wasting time, whether intentional or unintentional, and you can reduce those costs. Four or five years ago, we went out manually and monitored drivers coming in, coming in from the same school, left, could have left the school at the same exact time. So we tracked all of that. We were able to save on average at least 10 minutes for at least half of our drivers. And that was to the tune of somewhere around $35,000. There's also potential fuel savings. One of the GPS vendors guarantees a 5% fuel reduction or they'll take 25% off of your invoice amount. So they guarantee that. Either 5% of your fuel expenses or 5% of your payable expenses. There are three major players in, in the market that they're on the school bus bid list, which means you can purchase that equipment already on your school bus when you purchase your school bus. Those are the three that we've gotten pricing from current bids that they've had with other districts. And that's, and, and that savings is guaranteed to be 5% of your fuel or 5% of your payroll if you use their time and attendance piece. One of the vendors will even interface with Skyward, which we use the TrueTime time clock. So basically, it will send those start punches into, compare with your, or into your TrueTime system.
Okay, can I, I just need clarification right there because I've been in, and I've watched the line of bus drivers as they're trying to do the time clock punch. Or they shift over and start to do the online punch where there's only two computers or one computer breaks. And I've seen the line get very long. And they're standing there waiting to be able to sign in and start their clock ticking.
That's correct.
So this system will eliminate that, will streamline, and will also be able to take attendance and interact with Skyward?
Correct, yes. It, they can, depending on what kind of time and attendance piece they have, we can either interface with Skyward or at least compare with Skyward. But we can use that information to start their shift. So what you're talking about is usually at the afternoon routes, they all kind of clock in pretty much at the same time because all, all the middle and high schools get out pretty much at the same time.
Well, I've seen it in the morning, the line is so long.
Yeah, when they're coming back in, they're all coming back in from the same school. So they're all coming in and they're, it does get very congested. So they could actually start their route on their bus and then start their shift on their bus and then their shift on their bus. So they would go out to their bus and then that, there's all kinds of types of systems. So it could be an actual clock-in feature or it could be when the engine starts. So there are a number of different ways to do that, but, and they're all slightly different. So we would certainly have to research which one would work best for us. But yes, there's time and attendance piece, and then there's also the reduction in the...
So this 500,000, that does not include that attendance piece?
It would, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It does not include the, the student tracking piece, but it does include the upgrades to the cameras. And it also includes being able to, a Wi-Fi system where we'd be able to download the camera, the video from the bus.
The student tracking piece is so critical. After hearing that hernia story where that kindergartner was left on that bus or was dropped, he was dropped off at the wrong location, just one incident like that. And I know we've had some close calls and I've personally watched how having a substitute driver can impact an entire day in a high school if that bus arrives late. It's, it's just, I, I would really like to see the bump for that attendance for the students so that we know the kids are on the bus and we know where they're supposed to be dropped off. That, that to me is the critical piece to the entire piece of pie here.
I agree, but you have to start with basic GPS or you can't even, you can't even have that.
Ms. Powers, I think, yeah.
What is, uh, do you factor, do you need perimeter location?
When we, when we establish bus stops, yes, we do. That doesn't mean that there won't ever be a bus stop at a, at an offender's home because they could have children living in that home. So what we factor in is, do they have to cross by that home? Or we don't put the stop at that home unless the, the children are offenders, live there with the offender?
Do you have to do it manually or can...
No, we put it in our, in our software system, in our routing software system. It flags them.
Um, Mr. Duff. So the real-time tracking that you would be able to pull up on a map?
Yes.
Where all the buses are in the county?
Absolutely.
And would it go out of county for like field trips as well or how does that work, do you know?
I don't know that. I believe so, yes. Because it's, it's just based on your cell service. It's based on cellular service. So it sends a signal back through the cell towers.
And what kind of monthly fee, monthly costs is there for the GPS? Do you know what that works out to be or what our recurring cost will be? Just curious.
The first year includes that. The second year is in the $35,000 to $40,000 range.
A total?
Mm-hmm, for the whole year.
Okay. So we'll be looking at $35,000 to $40,000 a year fees as far as the GPS system goes?
But 5% of our fuel is, is $64,000 based on last year's fuel expenses. So you would make up that savings with your fuel reduction.
And how do they, how do they correlate the fuel savings? Marilyn, can you just explain that to me?
It's based on downtime, essentially. You eliminate downtime, so you see where the bus is sitting, where it's idling, and you can run more efficient routes. So if you see that you're, that you're running ahead of schedule often in one area, you're having to wait to catch up, or you're, or you're getting to school too early and you, you make those adjustments and you save that downtime. Over time, you're, over time, that savings is going to be less and less because you become more and more efficient.
Okay. And the 500,000 includes for the installation of the devices and also new cameras? You're saying new HD? How's that going to...
It includes 83 new HD units because those are the 83 that we don't, that need to be replaced.
Correct.
That currently fail or not good quality or not operating.
Right. And there are, because the new buses that we purchased, we purchased it with the...
Correct.
Digital camera system, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Marilyn, on the, the student tracking portion of it, do you have an idea of what that's going to, the difference in cost that that would add?
It's not that expensive. Let me see if I have notes on that. I haven't gotten all the pricing on that, but it's not as expensive as the initial purchase for... I have $32,000, right around $32,000 a year or leasing the equipment. Or, or you can lease the equipment for $6,000 a year.
$32,000, I mean, $32,000 more or you can lease it for $6,000?
Couldn't we just start out with a lease? And then depending on how we, how, how we feel about the use of the equipment...
That depends on the provider.
Then we can move into the pros and cons of ownership.
It depends on the provider, whether they lease or not. The one that I got pricing from does, does do the leasing as well.
Thank you very much for that.
And is there then a, a situation where the student is given an ID and that's swiped as they get on the bus? I'm trying to understand what, what's going to be involved.
Two popular ways, the most popular ways. Obviously, you can't use biometrics anymore. There's no eye recognition or thumb recognition. So there is either a, an RFI reader where you get in proximity to the reader that's on the bus or a barcode. The barcode cards are far less expensive than the, the ones with the RFI or the something reader, where it's a proximity reader, similar to what we have on the back doors. You get within a certain... No, the state of Florida, the state of Florida one allows to use biometrics.
And the concern though that, that with that is, is if that becomes what we're using for dependency, it would be very easy for my friend to take my card and, and get the, and then the student's registered on there as opposed to the bus driver who's eyeing the student and actually we know that the student is there or not.
Yes, that can...
So I mean, there's pros and cons to that.
More elaborate systems will flag you if someone gets off at the wrong stop and those types of things. But there's no way to know if it's the right person. So yes, you would have those issues.
Marilyn, students are expected to have that card every day to get on the bus?
Correct, yes. Now, you can also, the driver can also...
Can manually if they, if a child forgot it, they could, and I'm sure there's a picture ID that pops up.
The driver can manually enter that as well. It just, that then becomes cumbersome and time-consuming, especially if you're at a bus stop where you're stopped and traffic is...
And do we know though, I mean, if the idea is for it to be a save, a time savings, you know, the question would be also is, is that going to start? Now, we have a new procedure that starts adding a whole new level of lines of students getting on the bus.
And it will initially, it will initially until they get used to doing that. But that's just like anything. I mean, any, with the roll call procedure, some of the drivers have, the students will get on and they'll be able to tell us how exactly what page they're on. So they'll say, "I'm on page three," and they'll find the name quickly. So that's, there's always a learning process with that. So definitely initially there would be...
Did you say approximately you thought 15 minutes in the morning and afternoon you thought would be saved with the idea of not having to...
We are currently doing roll call in the mornings. We only do that in the afternoons. So, but that's approximately 15 minutes for every elementary driver.
Because just to give the board an idea, as if at $12 an hour, that's roughly $6 and then for the day, times, we have about 100 drivers?
143.
Okay, so I just did even 100, so that's even not needed. That's $110,000 a year.
Starting pace 1305 an hour.
So we certainly would be, there was, there is some very legitimate savings to consider with that. Is that something that, that you all are going to then do a recommendation on? That, that's going to be put, added into the budget?
Yes, that's certainly the direction we wanted to go. Must be here to be contrived today. The next thing is, actually Marilyn's as well, bus lists. They've indicated that there's a need of repairing two bus lists. It's here at Embarness and two at Chris River.
Correct.
And when I talked to her, I said, you know, can we spread these out over a couple of years? Not to, to kind of reduce the impact initially.